We need to order if everyone could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions for the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we are going to turn it over to our fiscal officer, Tom Wolf, for the 2026 alternative tax budget proposal.
Thank you. Our office sent out the budget to everyone, so hopefully you had a chance to review it. Again, we used conservative estimates for the alternative tax budget, and everything was fairly comparable with years past, nothing major, no major differences. I don't know if anyone has any questions off the top.
I'll say I looked at it. I have noted here, outside of certainly a conservative budget, relatively flat, really, there ain't that slight bump in inside millet's that we basically pull out a little earlier. I mean, it's not like that's coming really to us. It's really passed right to the
to the health district, yeah.
So.
Yeah, because we're on so many years of an increase with them, so that inside millet's, the general fund goes straight out to the health district. So, I do want to say, I feel like all the departments worked really well on their budgets. We did budget conservatively. I'd rather be conservative and do an amended certificate if we get more funds in. But I think everybody worked really well on this budget, and it is relatively similar to the past.
Yeah, I agree. All these department heads did a great job putting their numbers together.
Does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns?
I don't think there's a reason to hold it, because everybody has had time to review it, and we need to file it. So I don't think there's a reason to hold it.
That's it. Do you need an official motion just to follow it?
I think it's on.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Tom. That'll take us over to Sheriff's report. Cliff?
Good evening. You guys just have a report for July in front of you. A little preference with our, we just had an upgrade on our crash report system, so I think those numbers are off, because definitely more than one injury accident in the month of July. So, once I get those numbers correct, then I'll send you guys in. Calls for service was eight hundred and thirty-nine for the month, sixty-three crashes, one injury accident, which maybe those numbers aren't exactly correct. We had sixty-two alarms, two hundred and eighty-four traffic stops, we issued a hundred and four citations, we had fifty-six arrests, and two hundred and nine vacation security checks at businesses and residents. Our detective was assigned eleven cases, closed out six of them, two felony thefts, two break-in and entering, one sex offense, and one shooting. We have your charts in front of you for the last yearly lookbacks, and then the, I think, six or seven year lookback now.
So essentially, from a community safety aspect, our numbers are trending in the right ways. That, you know, hey, calls for services, crashes, those major things are down, but the fact that, you know, we're doing more traffic stops from a proactive to.
Yes. Yeah, the, uh, the numbers are down a little from years previous, which is, you guys are definitely not doing proactive, getting in the neighborhoods for these steps, and we allow car break-ins and people walking around checking door handles for unlocked cars, so we do, car maintenance guys try to get in the neighborhoods as much as possible, and be seen in the neighborhoods, which helps deter some of that.
Getting, it's that age-old adage of how many people, well, I just chose to leave my wallet or my purse and leave it unlocked. Not that it's right that somebody's getting into the vehicles, but you're not, you're not taking the proactive measure yourself to, so. Can't work on that enough. Residents need to take that proactive, you know?
Because if you see a lot of the videos that people post, it's just they walk around with a front unlocked car. They're not breaking windows, they're not, unless there's something in there they really want. Most of the time, they're just looking, crying a lot to unlock the car door, they will, you know, same with the open garage doors, stop, go, take what they can. So that was the monthly report. The scam wanted me to touch a little on electric bicycles, electric scooters, and golf carts. We've got a lot of complaints about those. As far as electric scooters, electric bicycles, those fall under the same laws as regular bicycles. There's a whole section for bicycles, I think it's forty by eleven fifty-one of the crash code. Now with the e-bikes, there are three different classifications of e-bikes, depending on how fast they can go, and depending on what class they are, and what rules they can follow, and they're supposed to be stamped on the e-bike. That's the one class that falls on. I think class one and class two are under twenty miles an hour, and they are basically like bicycles. And then class three is anything that can go up to almost twenty-eight miles an hour, and that one, I believe, you have to be fifteen and a half and wear a helmet and all that. And as far as golf carts, there is a law in Ohio that golf carts can be approved to be driven on streets under thirty-five miles an hour. That has to be approved by the board trustees for the township, or any municipality has to agree to allow those to be on the roadway. We've been educating our deputies on the, the Plain Township Board has never passed a resolution like that, so when we do see people out on golf carts, we stop them, we educate them about, you know, yes, you can get inspected, yes, you can get a play on it, but they're not approved on roadways in Plain Township. So we're doing some educational stuff with people as we see them. But again, with golf carts, they have to be licensed drivers, they have to be, so when we see these kids out on, we try and have education with them and their parents on what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do.
To touch on golf carts, O-Tarma, who is the township insurer, does not, there's liability issues if the board would allow them on township roads, and they do not encourage that at all. They actually, you know, are very against that type of change. It's been discussed at Nazium and Perry a couple of years ago. They have the same insurer. We've talked about it back and forth with them. There's, it's just not something they would ever want to see the board to allow due to accidents, injuries.
Yeah, but there is, there is laws on the books for them if that'd be something. So we just educate right now, educate people on they're not approved to be ridden on the roads in Plain Township. And I want to touch on scams. It seems that those are back in the mix where people are receiving phone calls claiming to be the Stark County Sheriff's Office and that they owe money. I just want to let the residents and the board know that, you know, the sheriff's office will never call you and tell you that you need to bring money to us. That's not something we do. I don't know any police agency in the country that does that. So I just caution residents that if they get those phone calls to, you know, really question, and then, you know, hang up and call us, and we'll be happy to tell them that it wasn't us. So, follow up. Any questions?
We had put the Salvation Army on there. Chief, did you want to touch about the issues of the Salvation Army and how we're addressing those, and you're helping us with that, too?
Yeah, we had some complaints through zoning that people were leaving trash again, and unwanted items, et cetera. When the store's closed, and that's our problem, is the stores actually closed. They, they have signs there, do not leave items. People leave them, and then we have people rummaging through and making a mess, et cetera. It's usually Saturday night into Sunday, and the sheriff's office did do some extra patrols.
We had done extra patrols, and actually, our deputies have been sending me pictures of the stuff there. I mean, piles of couches and all that stuff.
But they clean it. The thing is, it's not a nuisance, because the minute they open, the Salvation Army cleans it up. And it's a lot of work for them, too. It's a lot of work to have your guys do extra patrols, because sometimes there's, you know, people there, too, so.
I know in the past that they had roped off or chained off the driveway. I don't know. It doesn't seem like they're currently doing that.
On the south, on the south side, on the south side. Because, I mean, this has been going on for years, because we had to fight them to rope that off, and I don't know why they've been so vehemently against putting some surveillance out there that would help them and help us.
Cameras. They have cameras now. Yeah, they do have cameras.
Yeah, they did put cameras out.
And they put cones up to try to, you know, make so you can't come in. They pile stuff in front of the cones, and, I mean, it's just, you know, people want to get rid of their stuff, I guess, like right now, and.
They come after hours, because it's mostly stuff that.
Nobody wants, like, they wouldn't take.
It's furniture, things they can't push in their car.
Convenient place for them. Unless they have a gate literally on every entrance.
Then they dump it in front of the gate.
Yeah, I don't know what to do.
So with that, I mean, hearing that they've got surveillance there, if there were any images, and say somebody could be identified, is that enough, is that enough to where you could ticket them for illegal dumping?
We could probably do, yeah, depending on the items, or, you know, being trespassing after business hours. I mean, that would be something we'd have to look at case by case, depending on what they're doing. If they are just putting clothes in their bin, I'd.
Yeah, no idea that if somebody's dropping the big stuff for after-hours.
Yeah, somebody just weekend left.
Because that becomes expensive to their, to their mission, to spend money on stuff, to dispose of versus.
Of the missions.
So they're getting a double nanny, really.
Yeah, and our guys are getting over there, and they haven't really found anybody, you know, and the complaint was that there's been, you know, homeless people sleeping in the stuff for wanting to do the stuff. They haven't really found anybody going through the stuff. It's just they're kind of going, oh, there's super stuff to held up. So it's more people dropping stuff off after-hours than seem like them actually.
But thank you for your help with that, that was a patrol.
We continue our extra patrols there, and try to mitigate that the best we can.
Thank you. I appreciate the points and information. Okay, that'll take us over back to Tom, to the fiscal officer report. Tom?
Thank you. Fiscal Officer Number One says, "A resolution to authorize the payment of pending warrants in amount of four hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twelve cents."
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Two says, "A resolution to authorize payment of regular payroll in amount not to exceed three hundred thousand."
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Three says, "A resolution to authorize payment for the following medical claims."
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Four says, "A resolution to adopt the 2026 proposed alternative tax budget for Plain Township as presented and to authorize Plain Township Fiscal Officer to submit two copies of this budget to the Stark County Auditor Honor before August twentieth, twenty twenty-five."
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Five says, "A resolution to authorize a refund as follows for overpayments of EMS."
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Six says, "A resolution to authorize the following transfer of funds."
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
That concludes the fiscal officer report.
Okay, thank you, Tom. That'll take us over to the Minister here. Lisa?
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution authorizing an application to the Muskingham Watershed Conservancy District Partners in Watershed Management Project Assistance Program.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, this is for the almost forty-seven acres of property.
Siyaman?
Yeah.
Property.
Yep, that we are applying for grants for conservation and protection of the wetlands at the Nimishone Creek.
Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution to authorize the attached walk-run race application for the Stars in Strides Walk Run.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
And my last item is a resolution for false alarms in excess of three responses pursuant to the authorized Code 505.511.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Yeah, I do want to say, you'll see a twelfth violation on there. We, we do send letters. They're paying the fines. The problem that we have is anytime there's a false alarm, we have to have to pull two sheriff deputies off the street, and they could be responding to other calls. They don't know it's a false alarm until we get there. So I'm trying to work with the owner of the one business that is out of state. He actually owns the property. He wondered why he was getting the letters, and I said, well, because if it's unpaid, it goes as a tax lien on the owner's property. But we're trying to work with that, because a twelfth alarm is a lot. That's twelve times we pull two deputies off the road to go to something that isn't really happening. So, thank you, guys, for that. I know that's frustrating to them, too. We're trying to work with the honor to find a resolution.
Sadly, after the fifth alarm, it's at a hundred and fifty, so, I mean, I don't want to belabor this, but at some point, once it's over, I mean, can we escalate it? I mean, because sometimes, you know, business is like, hey, I'm making money. It's a hundred and fifty bucks. It's not, it's not worth the headaches. I'm going to have this and alarms, but like, where it spikes from, hey, at number five, it's half it. Hey, after five, guess what? We're going to hit you. Two for, and I'm throwing out arbitrary numbers, a hundred and fifty, five hundred bucks, because.
It might be.
It's all, okay.
I think it's.
Yeah.
But with the one that is really violating, they could pay for a whole new alarm system with the amount of, you know, fines. So, I just wanted you to know we're working on it. Please let.
Thank you.
The officers know. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes. And that's the end of the administrator report. Thank you, Lisa. That'll take us over to Chief with the Fire Department.
Uh, thank you. Item number one is our monthly report.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, please see Chief after. Go ahead.
Item number two is a resolution by Plain Township Board Trustees to change the pay rate of the following part-time EMTs and paramedics as they have successfully completed their one-year probation.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution by Plain Township Board Trustees to create a job description for OIC position, which would be filling for the lieutenant in their absence per attached job description.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. It's another step. Gives them a little bit of an opportunity to take on a little extra responsibility, understand a little bit about command and control, and, you know, gives you an opportunity to look at people at promotions.
Exactly. I mean, and we're going to, obviously, we have a little more work to do to get it officially put through all the systems. We have, you know, the board trustee, and the union, et cetera, but, I mean, that's the first step, is to create this, to, you know, that way, people that did take the current lieutenant test might be interested in filling in for the lieutenants when we have vacancies, or, you know, call-offs, or, you know, vacations, et cetera.
And the best interview is an on-the-job interview, where you can evaluate them day in and day out, so. Nice job, Chief. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
And then that concludes Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief. That'll take us over to the Road Department. Drew?
Thank you. Road, item number one is the monthly report.
Does he want us always?
Is that the little camera guy?
Yes, that's the camera.
Okay, if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, please see Drew afterwards. Go ahead.
Thank you. Road, item number two is a resolution to contract with RMI Submit for the installation of a concrete sidewalk. I shouldn't say sidewalk, I'm sorry. Kerbin gutter, twenty-four, I'm sorry, it is a sidewalk. That's a long start, but, let me start over, I'm sorry. Resolution to contract RMI Submit LLC for installation of a concrete sidewalk, twenty-four hundred, twenty-eight square foot, seven dollars, thirty-five cents along Star Cliff, not to exceed seventeen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
I think just for discussion, this is to replace sidewalk. We're not going, you know.
So we, when we toured the Kerbin gutter out of there, that sidewalk, this in front of the two apartments, we had to replace that elevation change as well.
I just want to call it out, because I know we get inquiries of, when are you putting sidewalks in my neighborhood? And that township does not have that statutory authority, so in case anybody is listening here or outside of here, this is purely a replacement to return to prior state.
Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. Road, item number three is a resolution to authorize purchase and payment to Linner Truck and Trailer for a 2026 B&amp;B tow trailer.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. Road, item number four is a resolution to authorize purchase and payment to Bear's Lawn and Garden for a 2025 Bentrack tractor for forty-five twenty and tough cut.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. Road, item number five is a resolution to enter into a mutual agreement with the City of Canton for the general roadway maintenance to include Exhibit A and Exhibit B. You can see the road list attached there.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
I think it's all more important, the more we can continue to document this stuff, especially given some, especially with the City of Keene. There's more public statements recently in aggression towards townships, so having everything dialed in, good work.
Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. Road, item number six is a resolution to authorize payment to I-Works Systems Incorporated for the Public Works Management Software Services annual subscription fee not to exceed forty thousand, nine hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
This is a really nice addition from just across our township enterprise, because you've had I-Works within zoning for a number of years, so to find that common platform with just a positional module.
Yeah, it is really nice. It's helpful. Everybody, all the crews are mobile now with work orders, so they have an iPad. They can write work orders. They can, you know, take pictures, all that good stuff.
Upload it, so you have it forever.
So you have it in real time.
And the citizen request is amazing. I don't know if you saw it, road alone had like over a hundred and thirteen citizens request. Lieutenant Hall and I know, we get them at all hours of the night on safety things, and to be able to respond to residents twenty-four seven, and let them, you know, people work. Not everybody works the nine-to-five, and it's nice for them to be able to apply for a permit, you know, after hours. They don't have to come into the building. It's nice for them to reach out after hours and make a request, so it's, it's worked out really well for the township. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. Road, item number seven is a resolution to contract with Backdoor Excavating Incorporated for replacement of storm sewer culvert pipe at Twenty-Eighth Street Northeast and Maple Avenue.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. Road, item number eight is a resolution to authorize payment to United Earthworks Progress Building Number Eight and Envoys twenty twenty-five dash twenty forty-three and twenty twenty-five dash twenty forty-four for the Orange Street Northwest Improvance Project phase one.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes road.
Thank you, Drew. That'll take us to the zoning department. Chief is going to take care of that. Chief?
Item number one is our monthly report for zoning. New starts are up still?
Yeah, mine alone this month, yeah, they are up, and they keep coming in. We'll probably, my guess, is be leading the new ones starts again.
Three out of four years, because last year, I mean, Jackson was, was first time they beat us two years prior to her.
Okay, go ahead.
And item number two is a resolution by Plain Township Board Trustees to declare items A through D as abatement.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution by Plain Township Board Trustees to declare items A through D abatement paid.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Sabo?
Yes.
Mrs. Harless?
Yes.
That concludes zoning. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That'll take us over to the Parks Department. Rob?
Thanks. Item number one is the monthly report.
Nice job on the programming revenue.
Yeah.
Excellent job. Okay, if anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns, please see Rob after. Go ahead.
Item number two is just a discussion item. Very nice, young lady emailed myself and called up on the phone call about the parks possibly being donated these two parcels right off of the middle branch. I don't know that there's park usage, but from a conservation standpoint, it certainly does make some sense if the board seems comfortable with that, but.
There are wetlands, correct?
There are wetlands.
Yes.
There's a creek that runs through it, under the ridge.
I actually, as soon as we forwarded this request to us, reached out for an opinion from Western Reserve, and, I mean, their exact words were, "From a green space conservation perspective, I believe that adding on to the conservation corridor and conserving floodplain is very beneficial." I mean, from the aspect, I know also, you know, we're not trying to accumulate property and land bank like some of the cities, but we, we know that flooding in any community is an issue. We have an opportunity to take this, and it's not going to require any additional maintenance and upkeep. Personally, I think it's a feather in the cap of all of us from a conservation aspect, given, you know, we talk about building and so forth, and that's exciting, that's exciting, but there's not much green space left in Plain Township, so from a responsibility aspect, not only just preserving green space, but ties into floodplain, wetland area. I mean, to me, if we don't take advantages, I think we, at a bare minimum, should kick it over to Stark Park, but I know where my preference lies.
And, and Rob and I talked about it, and I said she offered it to Plain Township, you know, that's where she'd like it to go, and it is an area where we're not going to have to mow, you wouldn't mow and maintain it. It's a wetland.
She already lives in Plain Township.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
So, do we? I think it's just an official reach back out, saying we're interested, and then Eric, you would need to draft something formal from a resolution that we formally adopted, so.
So the consensus is, yes, we want to move forward with receiving the donation.
That's awesome. Thank you. And item to the law director, that'll take us over to communications. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, normally I do the communications, but I would like Chief to talk about this program that he presented to myself and to the board, that the board fully embraced, and really, I don't want to take the spotlight. It was really, it was Chief's idea, and it was a good one. So Chief, if you want to go over the pictures and.
Uh, yeah, first of all, obviously, we got the money through, the administrator through the opioid money, how we got the money for this. So we did our first health bus at Thirty-first and Royal, at the church there. They were nice enough to let us use their space. We ended up having about twenty people show up. It was the very first one that the county had kind of partnered with us. They used some of the fire guys as kind of a run-through at the beginning to see how it went. So, being the first one off, I think is good. We've actually passed out bags on, right, two hundred and fifty homes in that area, offering the smoke detectors and some other stuff, the health bus, et cetera. So we're hoping we get response to the smoke detector program, too, on top of this, and so we got four more scheduled, all in areas that we feel that, you know, the need is there. Obviously, anybody can come to. It's a free event, so we're looking forward to doing the rest. And the staff there was, we have nurses from the Health Department, we have medicom staff. Actually, Cleveland Clinic Mercy came out. They did hot dogs. It may not help with your cholesterol, but, but it at least offered some food, so at the same time. But anyway, we, they did have some food and stuff there, too, and we had some other stuff.
And I, I think it's a, really a thoughtful way, and thank you to the board for embracing this program, to use the, the one opioid, one Ohio opioid funds. It's no tax dollars. That's money from the opioid settlement, but it's a great way to get out in the community, because they also handed out Narcan kits. We gave out the Natera bags that allow you to dispose of the medication seamlessly at home by just plopping them in and adding water. So it's huge, huge outreach, and just thank you, because this is something that really can impact the communities.
Yeah, and I think two, two things from my perspective. Number one, it does meet the requirements of what the funds. Yeah, and I, I think two, two things from my perspective. Number one, it does meet the requirements of what the funds can be used for. But number two, I think this partnership with the Health Department and doing this type of thing is a little nicer fit. I think it's win-win for everybody, so we kinda brought on another agency that their goal and mission is to obviously educate, promote. So I think it's a good partnership, and I think it's a little bit better expenditure of our share of that court case.
I, I think this type of program's gonna be a model for the state, honestly. This is just amazing to have this kind of partnership and this outreach to the community.
I do know, have you heard, is there any more settlement money actually coming?
There'll be some coming.
I, I know there was supposed to.
Yeah, and I just don't know where that is in the process, 'cause it, you know, it's everything that's gonna move to Snail's Pace, it's gonna need approval.
It kinda faded away for a while.
Yeah, they got hot because they got one factor, the distributors, and they still have some other avenues that they have.
That's what I, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, and hopefully, if we have any leftover, we can, you know, add another event with the Health Department, which would be great.
And then also, the Seven Twenty Market has given us free space. We've, we've, you know, added a fire truck with its Terra Bags, Narcan kit, just trying to give another avenue to, you know, to have people see us, you know, see the products, 'cause uh, it's hard to get to people, you know, Facebook doesn't always work, sometimes just happen at those events, so.
Yeah, and we are getting a lot of walk-ins, I think, um, in the neighborhood that they kinda can't best for the DiTara bag, so we're getting a lot of walk-ins where they, they had it on their door, and they'd like the bag, so we're, we're giving them out.
Which is nice, 'cause you figure we used to have to drop off off here, that we had to get rid of for a number of reasons, so now, I mean, outside of redirecting, and then we're giving a very easy solution.
Another alternative.
Yeah.
Thank you for the update, and, uh, this'll take us to the portion of the meeting for the public speaking segment. We welcome any audience member who wishes to address the board. You may refer to our public speaks format that's located on the back desk. You can approach the podium or stay seated, whichever you prefer. Please provide your name and address to our fiscal officer to be included in the minutes. Please note that in accordance with Plain Township regulations, each speaker is allotted three minutes to ensure all viewpoints are heard effectively, fostering fairness and accommodating diverse perspectives within the allotted timeframe. Keep in mind, this is not a question-and-answer format, but an opportunity to speak. The board respects the rights of citizens to present differing opinions, views, and criticisms. Both the board and citizens are expected to respect the comments of others while maintaining the highest levels of decorum. Is there anyone on the upstairs that wishes to approach?
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir. What is your name and address for the...
Severin Stevens, five-four-two-four Tanager Avenue. Uh, I live in the Norwood Hills Development, uh, corner of Fifty-Fifth and Middle Branch, which is, um, I don't want this to come across as a complaint. It's gonna sound like one, and it's in regards to the Road Department. I haven't, I have, I probably should've approached you before tonight. I don't wanna make it sound like I'm calling, calling the Road Department out in the public, but I'll just take this. It seems like our curbs, curb work was started in the neighborhood, I bet, probably in April. Guys work, you, you see guys on the street two, maybe three days, then they're gone for three weeks, and this has happened every month of the summer. Curbs have yet to be completed. There, there, there's gaps in some places that could easily swallow a bicycle or a motorcycle or a scooter tire, and they're deep. Injury, injuries or damage probably are just waiting to happen, and I've gone, I've had a car damaged in Maslin before by the Road Department, and it's up to you to get it fixed. There, there, there's no government, I'm not saying there's not government accountability, but the liability falls back. It's not on you guys, it's on me.
That's true. Yeah, you're right.
So, that's a concern. The other thing is, one of the things, one of, when's the project gonna be done, I guess? And it's not, like I said, it comes across as a complaint, but...
No, this is what, this is what it's for, so, trust me, there's some frustration on our side here.
Yeah.
I know, you're talking about the slot just between the road and the gutter. That'll be fixed on, uh, actually Thursday.
Yeah, but the whole, but, yeah, but just the whole project. There's a cutout in my curb where the, the drainage wasn't ever reconnected. I don't know why.
Yeah, we're, we're getting to that. So we're just waiting for some material, but the, the asphalt company has, um, they've rescheduled four times.
Okay.
So they're going back to first thing in September. That'll all be wrapped up over there.
All right, super.
So it's just getting materials. Everybody's busy.
Oh, no, I understand.
You know, we, you know, believe it or not, we get like the, you know, it's hard for us to get materials, uh, whenever all these other companies spend a lot more money than we do. You know, so they, they, they just keep telling us next week, next week, next week.
Yeah, no, I get it.
You know, it'll be, this week, that slot will be filled in.
Okay.
I think in the spirit of integrity to this con- conversation, we, we have always, we actually were really good at setting precedents across the county and getting our roads bid earlier so we could get them in and get them out.
Right.
And now we've had folks that still follow after us, but what they're coming along and doing is, after we have our contract in, and it's, hey, let's say a September first dead, deadline, the contractors are negotiating with these new entities, and they're going, "I need it done by August first," so even though they've come, they've come in, I mean, I know it's from a lessons learned, it doesn't help in the immediate, but it, it could be something from a contract language where we, we don't allow them to pull, we don't allow them to pull out until it's all, it's all complete, moving, moving fo- moving forward. That may be a consideration, but trust me, there's, outside of your area, there was, um, up in the Wellington Hills area, somebody hit me up at the WY this morning, and it's, you know, we don't have necessarily the equipment, the tools, technology, and resources to do that in-house. That's why it all gets co- contracted, so when the contractor screws us, I don't wanna sit up here, none of us wants to sit up here and make, make excuses, but, you know, we can keep thumping it, it's like, well, hey, contractually, we have, we have till X, and by the time you pursue anything legal-wise...
Yeah, and I'm a contractor, I get all that. No, I understand. I just wanted somebody up there to understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, me down here.
Yeah, for sure.
No, trust me, between road and zoning, I mean, they probably know when Brooks out or John's out, 'cause stuff we're getting, and they certainly know when I'm out, 'cause on the bike, you'll see emails popping through of, "Hey, take a look at this, take a look at that," so.
And we appreciate the work, too. I mean, we appreciate that they're getting done.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
It is hard for us to be at the mercy of them, because they do, you know, tend to put us on the...
And then...
We don't want anything.
I'm not happy the way it's been going either. Had a very strong conversation with the contractor yesterday, so.
I thought you said strong.
Yes.
That was a good feeling.
Very measured.
Politically correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board? Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address.
Cherry Zimmerman. I live at seven-six-three-one Morellos Avenue. I'm just following up with the previous complaint from two months ago about seven-six-two-two Morellos where the house fire occurred in January tenth. I know it was boarded up a month ago, July twelfth. What's the timeframe on what's gonna be happening with this house? 'Cause it's still weeds growing up around it. He mows the lawn, but the weeds around the immediate house are high, as we discussed when you were there, Chief, about a month ago. Just wondering what, what, where we are in the process.
Um, well, what I know right now is I talked to the homeowner yesterday, and we gave him a list of all the, um, demo companies.
You did that a month ago?
No, I mean, well, yes, and by the way, I followed up with her, followed up with her yesterday, um, of trying to secure a demo company in the, ahead of time, before this thing hopefully can be changed.
Or it is done, yeah.
And the gas company, electric company, all the people that, you know, need to be involved to get this thing done.
Got it.
Um, they are still fighting with their insurance company over the claim, um, so we're still in that process too, uh, but we, we're closer. I have to say that. I mean, I can't give you a date, but we're going to move forward with some other stuff.
That's what was said in a month ago. It's just very frustrating.
But what I don't think you wanna hear, or not willing, not willing to hear, is we are legally pushing every legal option we have. We can't force them in between, in a private party matter, between the insurer and the insured to settle. And what, I can tell you, I'm gonna speak for myself, under no circumstances will I authorize, as a board of trustees, to go in there and demo, demo that house. We'd possibly be on the hook and ruin those people's financial future. I shared that with you when I walked, walked over there. I shared it here, and I'm just gonna reinforce, we can't, I get it, it's frustrating, but we can't for, force it beyond, I mean, yeah.
I was just wondering, because when you were there a month ago, you said it was like thirty days.
Well, we gave them thirty days to se- to, to secure the building, which they, which they did.
They did.
They secured the building, boarded it up, so they adhered to what we asked them to do by the law revised code.
Right.
So now, we're in the next phase, I guess you'd say, of...
So there's no, you, there's no, there's no timeline from that standpoint, I guess is what I'm asking.
I mean, that's technically between the insurer and the insured, sure, outside of, you know, hey, the, with the high weeds along property, well, we would never, even if that structure is not, we could never do anything, but...
Here, here's the problem, is that, were we to say we're gonna raise the building, and we do that, and there's this dispute going on between the insurer and the homeowner.
Isn't there like a timeline that these people have to work in? I just don't understand this. Like, this happened January tenth. They, they have no timeline.
No, it's, it's not that they have no timeline, it's that if the timeline keeps getting extended because of this dispute, so we can't interject ourselves into this dispute without opening ourselves up to law.
Right, I understand.
From one side or the other. So the answer unfortunately is no, there's not really a, a, a hold-on date for them to have this dispute done. I think we were gonna talk a little bit about our procedure and our process in these, because
Right.
you brought it to our attention, how can we improve our...
Yeah, how can the township change this, so this doesn't happen into the future?
Well, I don't know that we can, but I think what we can do is, is tweak some things so that we might be able to expedite what we are capable of doing. And so that's the one thing that, that Chief kinda talked a little bit about, that I think we might be able to make some inroads in, is the ability to get in front of the right people sooner. And I hate to say this, 'cause these are all public, but, um, we might even have some, how do I say it the right way? Maybe I'll tell you after. Um, but we have some ways that we're looking at that, that might expedite things. Um, I just don't know how legally, um, effective they would be.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's my concern. How, how are you gonna prevent this in the, in the future?
Yeah.
'Cause, you know, this has been a learning experience for everybody.
Yeah, I agree.
So, especially for us.
And you all don't have to live next to it.
Sure. And we don't, and we don't want you to have to live next to that either.
You know, I've lived there since nineteen eighty-nine, okay, and I've never had a complaint about Plain Township. But this just seems like nobody, nobody, like, I, I understand about insurance, I get it, but it's just, it's, it's over the top. It's over the top.
See, that's where we're a little confused right now about insurance, because this never used to be this complicated.
Well, now that you have all these disasters, you know, but the thing is, if you're not fully insured, and I found this out, because I went, I have State Farm, so I went to my agent, and I said, and low and behold, guess what? I was underinsured. So I have to pay more money to get my house to, if it gets burnt to the ground, I'm covered four hundred thousand dollars. These people, I don't think are insured.
And, and very well could be, but what we have to do from a proactive standpoint now is to take a look at, what are the common practices in the insurance business right now?
Right, how's that impacting communities now?
Absolutely, because what we were able to do before was pretty easy, because insurance companies were afraid, hey, if we don't settle this, they're gonna turn around, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna use their own excavator. We're gonna have to pay their price to get that lien off of this property, so they were easy to work with. Now, insurance companies aren't easy to work with. They question everything, and we, I'm...
Can I, can I pose one more question? Why is the pod still on the property?
Why is, I'm sorry.
The pod, that has all their stuff in it. Why hasn't it moved to wherever they're living? Why is the pod still on the property? Isn't that a zoning issue?
Technically, those are only permitted to stay, stay in a drive for some, for several...
Okay, it's been there since February, people, February.
There absolutely is, because we have, we've removed, Oberon, Oberon Chaucer dealt with this, 'cause a resident had brought it up, and there was, uh, one other place, so
Yeah.
that need, that needs to be...
Yeah, and we just, I just addressed that with them, and so we're gonna send a, a letter out for that. There, there is some gray zones that are actively using, you know, in the code, like if you're actively using the pod, you know, so...
In what way?
In like putting stuff into it, tempting it, you know, so...
They're not living at the house.
Well, I know, I understand, and so I, 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 we are going to work on a letter for the pod.
The stuff that he uses is in his shed and up on the hill.
So, and that's what I had to clarify with them, where they're using equipment out of it to maintain.
No, because it's sitting outside of the pod.
So, yeah.
Right outside of the pod.
We're, we're, we're working on that too.
Okay, just wondering.
Yeah, that's, that's on the, on the list, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, do we have any other concerns of trustees? Concerns of fiscal officer?
No, no concerns.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from July eighth.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Seba?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harles?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the July twenty-second minutes.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Seba?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harles?
Yes. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from August the first.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Seba?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mrs. Harles?
Yes. There's no need for executive session, so I will make the motion to adjourn the meeting at six forty-six.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Harles?
Yes.
Mr. Seba?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.